Call the October 27, 2025, Luddington City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Trusano.
Present.
Counselor Krangrick.
Here.
Counselor Wojewski.
Here.
Counselor Large. Counselor Stibbitts.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
And Counselor Bolger.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Large has his excuse tonight.
Thank you.
All righty, I'll ask Associate Pastor Brandon Ford of Living Word Church to please come to the lectern and deliver the invocation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for having me tonight. Let's pray. Father God, I just thank you first and foremost for each person here, Lord, each government worker that is so willingly giving up their time, Lord, to help lead this community. Lord, we would be nowhere without good leadership, and we thank you for those that are in attendance here tonight, and even those that are absent. I just thank you for their willingness to lead us. I thank you, Lord, for their protection. I thank you for their safety. I thank you, Lord, that you keep them under your watch, that you guard them and keep them safe in all that they do. Lord, this job is not glamorous. There are those that would maybe even hope them and wish them harm, and I just pray that you would keep all of those things and situations away from them. I thank you, Father, for unity, Lord, here tonight. I thank you for that it begins with our leadership. And as that unity is formed, Lord, and as they set that example, Lord, it would just trickle down throughout every facet of this community, and that unity would become a normal thing. Lord, civility and kindness and gentleness would be a normal thing again. Lord, I just pray for your words tells us in James 1:5 that if any of us lacks wisdom, Lord, to ask you, and you would give it to us freely without finding fault. So, Lord, tonight, I just ask for the wisdom, Lord, to rest in this place, to rest on each and every council member, to rest on our mayor, Lord, and anyone who is part of decision-making tonight, God, I just thank you for that supernatural wisdom. And I thank you, Lord, that we will not be anxious for anything, Lord, but through prayer and supplication, we would make our requests known to you, Lord, and you would hear us, you would answer us, and, Lord, the peace of God would rest on this place right now. I just pray for all of these things. I thank you above all for unity, for peace, for civility, to have free rein here tonight. In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Request that anyone wishing to address the council, please step to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, and state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires, during any comment, I ask that the speaker respectfully finish their sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, I ask you to leave those materials on the lectern shelf below the microphone. And then there'll be another opportunity for public comment following communications from city officials, and the floor is now open. Good evening.
Child of the Most High God, Daniel W. Jensen, 503 North Vinus Street. Last council meeting, I stated and showed sympathy for the No Kings protesters. Tonight, I'd like to clarify that statement. The day of their protest in the park, I felt it again. What I witnessed was nothing short of caged, tortured, lost souls looking for freedom from manipulation. But the master of that manipulation, the devil, I have no sympathy for. Jeremiah 17:5, thus saith the Lord, "Cursed be the man that trusteth in man and make flesh his arm, and whose heart departeth from the Lord." In the name of Jesus Christ, I lock down, shut, block, seal all spiritual doors with the blood of Jesus Christ, cutting off every avenue, doorway, pathway, portal, or person that would attempt to bring an assignment of the kingdom of darkness into our lives, our homes, our family, and our workplace. In the name of Jesus Christ, I command every hex, vex, spell, incantation, potion, voodoo, sorcery, witchcraft, dark arts, curses, spells, and any other form of weaponized demonic activity by the blood of Jesus Christ, in the name of Jesus Christ, and by the holy fire of God be dismantled, destroyed, disabled, thwarted, disrupted, blocked, nullified, voided, disarmed, canceled, rendered powerless, and their communications lines be disrupted so that they cannot carry out their plans, and every curse reversed upon the head of the senders sevenfold that they would know that Jesus Christ is Lord. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Betsy Motika. I live at 321 North Williams Street in Luddington. I am here tonight representing Lakewood Center West Association. I am the administrative assistant for that organization, which has a building at 409 West Luddington Avenue, and we have brought our engineer tonight, and he would like to speak with you about our situation.
Thanks, Betsy. Scott Yost, 506 North Row Street here in Luddington. I'm a professional engineer. I have been retained a while, probably certainly more than five, six, seven years ago, to deal with some of the issues that the Lakewood Center West building has had with its, with this city of Luddington sanitary sewer backup into their building. We have, at times over the years, been able to talk with different people. I'm here this evening, and I apologize for this request, especially to you, Ms. Aldrich, because they have reached out numerous times to try to speak with Ms. Aldrich about ways of moving forward, given the issues and the problems that they have. There's been written communication, actually, the last letter that was sent was sent with delivery verification, phone call, and we have yet to receive any information to try to have a meeting with Ms. Aldrich so we could come up with a plan for moving forward, given the issues that have been going on with the city's sanitary sewer backup into that building. And so I just wanted to put it on public record that, this time again, I apologize for bringing this up like this, but we're still looking for a response so we can actually have a meeting going forward, and I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, last month, Tom Sanders, 927 Maple Street. Last month, the county approved a bid from Plumbers Environmental for the amount of $328,150 for lead service line exploration in identifying and confirming, not replacing, locations of lead service lines that must be replaced. The reason I bring this up is because I'm wondering why is the city contracting this out? On 8/2 of 23, the city showed up in front of my house after it was randomly selected with their back truck and their crew and dug in my front yard, and I went out and spoke with them and asked them, "What are we doing?" Well, the state requires us to check 600 lines a year for lead goosnecks. I told them that, well, my line is copper from my house to the meter and from the meter to the main. We still have to check. So then they took the city truck, the one that the taxpayers have already paid for, and they sucked all the dirt out of it down almost 10 feet at the curb until they found the water main, found my water line and my copper gooseneck, and then they took a picture of it. So why are we all of a sudden spending $300,000 and contracting this out, even though it says we're going to get it back? Is this some kind of money laundering scheme we're pulling here? Is this something to boost up the next inflation of our water bills? Because we have the equipment, the city taxpayers have paid for it, and we have the crew, and they know what they're doing. Why are we contracting out to almost $350,000? This is waste, taxpayer money going down the drain.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Rada, 3rd Ward, The Daily Planet. Pardon me for thinking this was a costume party. When I look forward, I see a lot of masks at every meeting. Police Chief Jones wears one. He told media that, quote, "We are not expecting the funds for the K-9 unit to come from the city's general fund," end quote, when asking this council to approve that unit. When you look at today's bills, he is using the city credit card to pay over $800 for K-9 insurance and vaccinations. That's being paid from the general fund. Officials wearing court, juster masks will tell us that somewhere down the road, the general fund will be reimbursed by a group that has no obligation to ever do that. But that's immaterial. We were told one thing, and it was a lie by the same thief who asked for hundreds of dollars for separating out exempt portions of multiple body cam footage FOIA requests where there are no exemptions to be separated out. That's public extortion.
Mr. Rada, if you'll direct your comments this way. You keep looking over at Chief Jones.
I look over that way, too.
If you'll direct them here.
Give me some more time and quit interrupting me, Your Honor.
Mr. Rada, point of order. Look at me and make the comments to me, to the mayor.
Put me back up to two minutes.
Go ahead.
Two minutes.
Go ahead.
You took my time, Your Honor.
Keep going.
That's public extortion, but since he wears a special costume, his peers in this council and the local justice system won't arraign him or Attorney Ross Sewage Hammersley for the crime that they committed against the people of Luddington. We get it. The council believes that some people are above the law, including everyone here who listened to our city manager detail a plan right here that was characterized in a lawsuit against the city as an extortion scheme, to wit, the city would allow Andys to finish their project and open their doors only if they agreed to install a protected bike lane on Reth. Some of you wear lawyer mask. Why weren't you able to say then that the statements meant all the elements of extortion to a T? As if to admit you were full of crap back in August, the council is scheduled to approve an engagement agreement with a Micah Myers Law Firm signed by your city manager back in July and never approved by the council before tonight. When you had convened on August 6 for a special meeting, you claimed it was due to the review of attorney-client privileged information, but the city never established a legitimate attorney-client relationship with the attorney present that night who wrote the opinion. The closed session was in violation of the Open Meetings Act, as I have maintained before, and you just admitted the quiet part out loud by adding this to your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Jeff Henry. Brought several stacks of verified state and city documents tonight. They're not here to point fingers. There are no individual names in these. They're here so everyone can see how the record fits together. Over the last few days, the public's response has been extraordinary. Tens of thousands of people are reading and sharing the information we posted. That tells us the community wants truth, not rumors. What the public now understands is simple. The contamination history and infrastructure issues are documented in state files, not speculation. The city's biggest challenge isn't politics, it's the condition of the sewage and lagoon system, which even state agencies has identified as a barrier to future grants. The good news is we know what worked before. When Scottville rebuilt its system 20 years ago, opened the door for growth along U.S. 10 corridor. Tonight, we're here to do the same, replace uncertainty with verified information and turn that into a plan. Transparency protects property values, protects public trust, and positions Luddington for funding when the time comes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Ray Karabowski, Luddington. Jeff and I have spent the last several weeks organizing this evidence, so it's easy to follow. These are opinions, these are public records from Eagle, the DNR, and the city. The goal tonight isn't to assign blame, it's to make sure everyone in this room can start from the same set of facts. Once we all see the same documents, we can talk about solutions that help the city, especially the infrastructure and the needs that attend before any new projects move forward. The public conversation online has shown that people care deeply about Luddington's future. Let's use the energy to fix the foundation instead of fighting over the symptoms. What Jeff described is exactly what we are carrying here tonight. Organize copies of the same documents so council members and the public can start from one shared set of facts. Transparency protects property values, and it strengthens the city's position for future infrastructure grants. We'll keep putting the record online so every resident can see the same information the state sees. That's how we rebuild trust. We're not here to point fingers, we're here to focus on solutions that help Luddington move forward. The data show our wastewater and lagoon systems are the real obstacle to funding and expansion. If we fix that foundation, just as Scottville did two decades ago, we open the door for every other improvement the community wants. The public conversation this week proves people care deeply about getting this right. We're ready to keep working with everyone who wants to see Luddington infrastructure restored and our protected, and our lakes protected, and our community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Evening. I missed the opening. Is this, am I allowed to speak to verge parking?
Three minutes on any topic.
Okay, great. I want to, I respectfully urge the city council to allow verge parking within the city of Luddington. Many of our small homes were built long before, were built long before modern parking standards and simply do not have adequate off-street parking options. For residents such as the elderly, individuals with disabilities, and young parents with small children, eliminating verge parking would create serious accessibility challenges. Without the ability to park near their homes, these residents would be forced to walk long distances, often along busy or poorly lit streets in difficult weather conditions. Verge parking is not a matter of convenience, it is a matter of safety, accessibility, and basic fairness for those who have no practical alternative. And finally, I want to say, I want to take a moment to thank our city council members and our police chief for their dedication to serving Luddington. Public service is not easy, and it takes courage to make difficult decisions while facing criticism and accusations. Despite recent negativity, your commitment to transparency, safety, and the well-being of our community does not go unnoticed. Many of us appreciate your integrity, the time you give, and the care you show for our city. So thank you for continuing to lead with professionalism and respect, even in challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boggs? Ms. Boggs, I fail to notice. Would you get up and just identify yourself? Thank you.
Melissa Boggs, 412 West Thomas Street.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Chuck Sabanski, 4th Ward. Just like to thank the DPW. Everybody raked leaves yesterday. Today, they were all doing a good job. Just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. That consists of approving, or request approval for the October 13, 2025, regular meeting minutes, the payment of the bills, and adopting this agenda. Be looking for a motion and support.
Still waiting.
One second. Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Stibbitts, support by Counselor Shaw. Any comments or questions? Are you none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We'll invite Jack Greaver from Lakeshore Keepers, he's the executive director of Lakeshore Keepers, for a 2025 update. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. This year, we had a really nice season. We were open seven days a week, starting in mid-May and going to Labor Day. That's the first year that we've done that since before COVID, since April of 2019. During the fall series, we actually stayed open later than normal as well, to the end of September, going four days a week during that program. That being said, with the increased hours, we did get increased tower climbs, up to 73 above last year numbers. That's over 7,000 total tower climbs relating to North Breakwater Light. We were open, yeah, Mondays alone, we were on average 45 guests. As an organization, I'd like to note this number as well, 46,000 guests we invited to the top of lighthouses in West Michigan. That's over 7,000 above last year numbers. We were able to do so at Luddington North Breakwater with a total of 78 volunteers that came in outside a local area and 22 from the local Luddington area. So those are our local volunteers that helped out once a week, and then the 78 guests come from actually 22, up to 22 states across the country. This year, we did have some restoration efforts. The exterior, the first floor, the black of Luddington North Breakwater was repainted this year, as well as the interior first floor, the gift shop space near the end of the season, prepping for next season right now, so doing some preparation items. This year, we did have the installation of a west and east and west-facing camera at the top of the Luddington North Breakwater Light that received over 60,000 views this season from May through September. Definitely is a need for that. People want to see the weather out there, increase of accessibility to get to the top of that tower, increasing spaces that were not available before. I say through September because we are 100% solar-powered out there. So as the winter season comes, as the leaves change, we need to take down that solar power, and there goes the camera. So that'll come back out in May of next year as we reinstall the solar panels at that location. On the agenda, you said Lakeshore Keepers. That is an assumed name. We did take out an assumed name. We're still legally the Sawall Point Lighthouse Keepers Association. We put out several surveys. People didn't know what Splica meant. So Lakeshore Keepers is two words. You don't have an acronym anymore, but have the tagline of illuminating West Michigan lighthouses. With that new logo, we actually did add a logo for every site as well. In the report there, there is Luddington North Breakwaters logo, which matches back to the parent organization. So it's some of the many reasons we did that, but including the acquisition of Manistee being five locations now, and two of them being Sawall Points, it made sense to do a name change. Looking at community collaborations, this year participated with Luddington Weekend with a booth, as well as a beach cleanup with the organization, a few. Beach Bonfire Days, we unfortunately only did one of those because of weather. There was a lot of wind on those evenings, so we had to cancel two of those evening events. Recently did a collaboration with the Maritime Museum out to Big Sawall, and of course, social media promoting Flag Days and other items online, really trying to bump up our social media. Planning for 2026, I do have mid-May opening, actually, May 19 will be our opening day for next year. We'll do a seven-day week program through Labor Day. The schedule will be Mondays from 1 until 5, and then Tuesday through Sunday from 10 a.m. till 5 p.m. Following Labor Day, we'll go back to our four-day week schedule. That'd be Thursday through Sunday from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., collaborating with the bike beach bonfire nights, beach cleanups, other community events. Restoration efforts that we're looking into right now include the exterior paint of the lantern room. The black on the lantern room itself needs to be repainted, so we're going to be looking at doing that, as well as interior ceiling repair, and then revisiting the exterior black. That would need to be done almost every year, every other year, as the winter really tears it apart. Looking for another good season this coming season, anything that really 7,000 or above out there is a good year for us, so really hopeful that we get to that mark again. We'll have significant hours similar to this year out there as well, going into the end of September. Open to any questions the council may have.
I just want to thank you for the cameras. Those were a great addition. Just want to thank you for the cameras, those were a great addition this year.
Yeah.
It's just interesting just to have that view.
Operationally, it was really nice to be able to see the break wall and to make that judgment call of when to shut down as an organization, to be able to look up in the morning to see if it was, hey, maybe today is not a great day to open, you know? So, did have minimal closures this year, but ultimately the lower water level, I know it's not great for dredging costs and everything else, but it's great for lighthouse operational hours, so.
Please don't say lower league, don't even mention it. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're next.
Thanks, Jack. All right, we'll move on to committee reports, and first up is finance and personnel, Council Wineschewski.
Yes, we have no report tonight, but we have a couple of action items. The first one is the water and sewer rate adjustments. This is a first presentation for us tonight. The city council heard a presentation from Dawn Lund, Utility Financial Solutions, regarding the city's water and sewer rates. Dawn reviewed the current water and sewer rates, projected cash balances, operational costs, and debt coverage ratio, as well as future capital needs, to determine what is the best way for the city to move forward to continue to meet the operational needs of its water and sewer funds. The city council adopted a 7.5% water rate increase and a 4.9% sewer rate increase for 2024 and 2025. Maintaining the current water rate increase for 2026 and dropping the water rate to 4% for 2007 and 2008 will keep the city on track to meet the goal of the city's asset management plan, which was prepared a few years ago. The sewer rate increase projected in 2024 for 2026 was 4.9%, will not be sufficient to meet the goal of the city's asset management plan. An increase in sewer rates of 15% in 2026, 15% in 2027, and 5% increase in 2028 will help to maintain long-term financial targets. Both the water and sewer projections also include the issuance of bonds in the future that will fund capital improvements. On average, the annual rate increases will cause the average user to see an increase of water prices by $5.25 per billing period, which is a quarter of the year, and an increase in sewer rates of $16.50 per billing quarter each year. As the revenue increases, it will allow the city to make investments in our water infrastructure, which will be felt by all rate payers. The increase in water rates should bring an additional $218,800, $126,800, and $131,800 revenue in the water fund for years 2026, '27, and '28 respectively. The increase in sewer rates should bring in an additional $301,000, $351,400, and $134,700 revenue in the sewer fund for years 2026, '27, and '28 respectively. As the revenues increases, it will allow the city to make investments in water and sewer infrastructure, which will be felt by all taxpayers, rate payers, sorry. An additional, to approve, I, so, I won't make a motion tonight, I'll wait till next week, but any questions, she was here at our last meeting and gave the presentation on the whiteboard, but any questions anybody has on sewer and water? Okay, that's first presentation on that. The next three action items we have are all clerical adjustments, so I'll read through those, and Deb Luskin can answer any questions we have, but all three of these are recommendations from our auditor from last year on things that we should do to clarify our bookkeeping. So, the first one is updated capital asset management policy. Michigan Department of Treasury Accounting Procedures Manual for Local Government Units, as well as the Government Finance Officers Association, suggest as best practice that each local unit of government have a capital asset policy addressing asset capitalization. This policy should set dollar thresholds for capitalizing an asset, as well as a useful life threshold. A policy was adopted by council in 2004 as a requirement of the Government Finance Officers Association. At that time, the capitalization threshold was set at $5,000. Increasing the capitalization threshold to a higher amount will allow for bookkeeping efficiency without impacting financial reporting and asset management. So, I move to adopt the 2025 updated capital assessment management policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Council Wineschewski, support by Council Trizano, to adopt the updated capital asset management policy. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
The next one is a resolution electing to designate all proprietary or enterprise funds as major funds. GASB 34 requires major funds for governmental and proprietary funds to be presented in separate columns on the audited financial statements. Non-major funds are to be combined into one column on the financial statements. There are five proprietary funds in the city's financial statements, which include water, sewer, municipal marina, Harborview Marina, and Cartier Park. Cartier is used to determine which individual funds are considered major funds and which are non-major funds. Depending on the activity with any smaller funds such as Cartier Park or one of the marinas, the classifications from major to non-major could change each year, which results in additional time spent to combine the non-major funds to move, or move the combined funds into their individual fund presentation. To allow for consistency of presentation of these proprietary funds in the financial statement, it makes sense to treat each of these funds as a major fund, which would then mean that each fund would be listed in their own column on the financial statements and allow ease of comparing activity in each fund between years. So, I make a motion that the city council adopt the resolution electing to designate all proprietary funds as major funds.
Second.
Motion by Council Wineschewski, supported by Council Trizano, to adopt resolution electing to designate all proprietary enterprise, proprietary or enterprise funds as major funds. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
The last one is a request bookkeeping adjustment of $356,407 on the government-wide statement of net position. GASB standards require that fund financial statements be consolidated as part of the process of incorporating data into the government-wide financial statement, which is part of the annual audited financial statements. Internal service funds, such as the motor pool fund, are required to be consolidated into governmental activities and are designed and intended to function as a cost reimbursement basis. The consolidation and blending of the internal service fund into governmental activities, which operates as a break-even basis, presents no challenge. When an internal service fund does not operate on a break-even basis, there is a requirement to present an internal balance between the governmental and business activities. The consolidation of the city's motor pool fund into the statement of net position since 2012 has resulted in an internal balance of $356,407, showing a liability in the business-type activities and an offsetting asset in the governmental activities. The city does not intend to generate future excess revenues in the motor pool fund that would naturally eliminate this internal balance, and the city intends to operate on a break-even basis. Therefore, there is no requirement to present an internal balance between the governmental and business activities, and it is recommended that a bookkeeping adjustment be made to transfer the $356,007 from the governmental activities to the business-type activities, which will reduce the internal balance between both on the statement of net position. This adjustment has no effect on the city's funds in any way. The transfer adjustment will only be reported on the government-wide financial statements, which are part of the annual audited financial statements. So, I'm so moved to approve a 2025 bookkeeping adjustment of $356,407 on the government-wide statement of net position. The adjustment would appear in the government statement of activities as a transfer from the government activities to the business-type activities, and it will reduce the internal balance between the governmental and business-type activities on the statement of net position.
Support.
So, this just eliminates an accounting artifact from many years ago, apparently? Does this eliminate an accounting artifact from years ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Back in 2011, it's been sitting out there when motor pool funds were eventually incorporated into the government-wide financial statement for GASB 34. It has been sitting out there with an offset to the asset account, and so ends up that the auditors feel it's time that that needs to be removed, there's no way it's ever going to be, there's no revenues that are ever going to come through and offset it, and it's just a financial statement offset.
You can't have the motor pool delivered for Amazon or anything like that to make money? Okay.
I do, I do just want to say too, Deb has explained these things for a couple of weeks to find the finance committee, and it's all clerical paperwork, but it's so hard to understand, and I'm sure glad she understands it all, because it is complicated.
So, we have a motion by Council Wineschewski, support by Council Shaw, to approve the request for bookkeeping adjustment on governmental, government-wide financial statement in net position. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And the last thing we have tonight is an equipment purchase for motor pool department. The city of Luddington Motor Pool Department has a large fleet of vehicles and equipment that supplies the rest of the departments within the city with their vehicles. Each year, the motor pool department budgets us for a certain number of new vehicles and /or equipment through the capital improvement plan. This is a request for approval to purchase a Bobcat UW56 Tool Cat with attachments from Grand Rental Bobcat of Luddington for a price of $72,556. These purchases will ensure city departments will have the reliable vehicles they need to complete their day-to-day tasks. While this specific piece of equipment wasn't budgeted for, we have $116,952 left over in the 2025 motor pool equipment line item due to other 2025 purchases coming in under budget. So, I make a motion that we purchase the Bobcat UW56 Tool Cat and attachments from Grand Rental Bobcat of Luddington for $72,556.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Council Wineschewski, support by Council Stibbets, to approve the purchase of Bobcat and motor pool fund as described. Any comments or questions?
Does it have a specific purpose lined up for it already?
Invite Andy, Mr. Law, to come up, supervisor superintendent of the DPW, to come up, I know he's excited about this, to come up to the microphone and answer the question.
So, these are described, it's kind of like a small side-by-side with the front bucket and other attachments that go on the front that we use. We use them a lot for moving picnic tables in the parks with the forks on them, we use them for landscaping areas down at the beach, moving snow on the sidewalks in the wintertime, so they're very versatile for multiple different things.
Is it brand-new or used?
This will be a brand-new one.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Any more? Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And that's all we have tonight.
All right, building and licensing, long-range planning, and industrial development, Council Trizano.
No report, but I have two action items. First item is to adopt ordinance number 573-25, the update to the United Development Ordinance. This recent update to the city of Luddington's UDO stems from the six-month review conducted after its implementation. Over the past eight months of applying the UDO in day-to-day operations and public interactions, several areas were identified for improvement. The proposed changes primarily address grammatical and formatting corrections, ensuring greater clarity and consistency throughout the document. Additionally, a number of practical adjustments have been made to improve the usability and interpretation for both staff and the public. Making the ordinance more effective has a working tool for development and zoning processes. As I mentioned before, also the section on verge parking was added to this. Council will be taking up later tonight the police power portion of that, but what's in the UDO are the design requirements and the licensing requirements. So, I make a motion to adopt the Unified Development Ordinance, six-month review, and that's ordinance number, where is it again? 573-25.
And I'll support.
We have a motion by Council Trizano, support by Council Stibbets, to adopt ordinance number 573-25, updates to the Unified Development Ordinance or the UDO. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, I'm sorry, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I just want to really appreciate your updates on this, too. It's nice to have something finalized, but then when it goes into action, lots of times we need to make adjustments, so thanks to the committee for doing that, too.
Thank you.
Will McKenna be updating the summary table at the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Counselor Crankbrink?
Aye.
Counselor Shaw?
Aye.
Counselor Trizano?
Aye.
Counselor Boulter?
Yes.
Counselor Stibbets?
Yes.
Counselor Wineschewski?
Yes.
Six ayes, one answer.
Motion carried, thank you.
Also tonight is the first presentation of ordinance number 577-25, the noise ordinance. I just want to make a couple of comments. Tonight is the first presentation of the noise ordinance. While there's a disturbing of the peace ordinance in the city, a noise ordinance will strengthen the city's ability to control noise, ensuring that they reflect both our community needs today and the growth we expect in the years ahead. The goal here is simple, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents while also supporting the vitality of Luddington's business and entertainment venues. For most of us, the sounds of Luddington are part of what makes this place special, but when the sound becomes excessive or unreasonable, it can interfere with someone's right to rest, work, or simply enjoy their home or their place of business. This ordinance is about finding balance. It doesn't prohibit activity, it provides clarity and fairness. It sets consistent standards, clearly defines what constitutes excessive noise, and gives our police department the tools they need to respond effectively and even-handedly. Importantly, this ordinance recognizes the unique role of our entertainment and commercial businesses. It gives them flexibility to operate and attract visitors, but it also establishes limits during late-night hours to protect nearby residents and neighborhoods. The ordinance aligns our code with best practices seen in other Michigan communities, providing clear definitions, structured penalties, and due process. It replaces ambiguity with consistency, something that benefits everyone. From a community standpoint, I believe it reinforces mutual respect between neighbors, between residents and businesses, between those who work hard downtown and those who live nearby. This isn't about quieting the life of our city, it's about ensuring that life in Luddington is enjoyable for all, day and night. As I mentioned, I believe the ordinance strikes the right balance. Some may see this ordinance as aimed at downtown music or outdoor venues, but I view it as aimed at unreasonable and excessive noise, not responsible entertainment. Downtown activity is vital to our local economy and community identity. Downtown activity is vital to our local economy and community identity, and the ordinance allows for normal business operations while setting reasonable limits during nighttime hours, which are between the hours at 10:00 and 7:00 a.m. to protect, to protect nearby residents. And I will say, this is a citywide ordinance, so it's just not for downtown, it's also for our neighborhood. The police department will have clear, objective standards to guide enforcement. Officers may issue a warning, giving the responsible party a chance to correct the issue. Repeat or blatant violations may result in fines or, in rare cases, misdemeanor charges. The also, the ordinance, as I said, applies equally to residential properties. It advances our goals of maintaining a welcoming family, a pleasant environment, vibrant downtown. I believe that it will prevent conflicts and strengthen mutual respect and ensure Luddington remains a place where both residents and businesses can thrive. Like I said, this is a first presentation. If you have questions tonight, or if you want to save them for when it comes up in two weeks, that's fine, but...
Any comments or questions?
I had just one to think about. On the, on page five, under penalties, John, it says that the first offense shall be a fine of at least $100, and the subsequent offenses should be a fine of at least 500, and then jail time with both of them if that happens. But I would even consider upping those, those fine prices. $100 isn't very much to pay. I would, I would consider going 200 for the first one, and maybe 6 for the second one.
Just so you know, when this was discussed, it was talked about in terms of this being applicable to both businesses downtown and residents, and that's kind of like how we came up with, with those figures.
Anyone else? All right. We'll consider that first reading. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Then, moving on to public safety, public utilities, Council Bulger.
So I have no report tonight, but I'll call in the chief to present the monthly reports.
Thank you, Council Bulger. Mr. Mayor, members of council, for August of 2025, 289 calls for service, 53 arrests, 39 citations, and 478 parking citations, 225 hours of overtime, and 61 FOIA requests. For September, 250 calls for service, 48 arrests, 30 citations, and 43 parking citations. We had 338 hours of overtime, 53 FOIA arrests. Year-to-date complaints are fairly close, arrests are up slightly, citations are down slightly, and parking citations have increased significantly. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Chief Jones, on the parking citations, is that basically from Luma Street Boat Launching Ramp?
Luma Street and Miss Stearns, yes, ma'am.
Stearns, too. Okay. Thanks.
And I do have one action item. As mentioned by Councilor Trizano, we also have to address the police power ordinance related to verge parking. The ordinance 577-25 primarily deals with the penalty aspects related to the items adopted already in the UDO. I would just mention that, at this point, we can't know for sure whether this is going to be a, you know, chicken ordinance, where we spend lots of time studying and enacting, and had like two people that took advantage of it, or whether several people will take advantage. But the whole idea was to have one more tool for people to consider in dealing with their own parking issues. And so here, if the council adopts this, that would be something homeowners could consider in addressing their parking. So I would move that the council adopt ordinance 574-25, the verge parking police power ordinance.
Support. I have a motion by Council Bulger, support by Council Shaw, to adopt ordinance 574-25, entitled verge parking. Any comments or questions? All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council Trizano?
Aye.
Council Wenceski?
Yes.
Council Stibbets?
Yes.
Council Bulger?
Yes.
Council Kringbrink?
Aye.
Council Shaw?
Yes.
Six ayes, one ahsen.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to cemetery, parks, recreation, and waterfront, Council Stibbets.
Thank you. We have no report and no action items this evening. We do, however, have a meeting tomorrow here in council chambers at 4:00 p.m., and that is all I have today.
Thank you very much. We'll open up to the whole council. Any items of business to be brought forward?
I have one. Coffee with the councilors is coming up again. It will be held on Thursday, November 6th, at 12:00 o'clock noon at the bookmark, and councilors Kathy Wenceski and Jack Bulger will be there to answer questions and address concerns. Again, that's Thursday, November 6th, at noon at the bookmark. Thanks.
Okay. Any other items? All right. Then we'll move on to agenda item number nine, City Manager Aldrich.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have any items to report this evening. I do have a laydown for your consideration, although I would like to amend some of the statements that were made. In the last 10 hours or so, the city has received several communications from concerned residents, potential trick-or-treaters, eager attendees of the playoff game on Friday evening, those who want to participate in the football game on Friday evening, and those who also want to partake in the Halloween festivities that are planned for Friday evening. And we have received some questions on whether or not the city is going to reschedule Halloween for potentially Saturday, or if we are going to keep trick-or-treat on Friday evening as planned. That time is from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the football game is scheduled to start at 7:00 p.m. Internally, from a safety perspective, we don't necessarily have any concerns as to how that could proceed. Our officers will already be out patrolling for the game. They'll already be working overtime, and it is, if they're already going to be out there working overtime, they'll already be out on the streets. That is, that is fine, and that's something that we can work through and accommodate, and we can work through that communication with the school, and we can do our best to mitigate those factors. However, I did not know if there is any appetite from this body to potentially change when Halloween is currently scheduled. I realize that that, it could be a, a positive thing to change that date, depending on if you are a avid football attendee, but if you also have young children and have set plans for Friday evening and don't plan on attending the football game on Friday evening, then maybe your Friday evening festivities could be ruined if we cancel it this last minute. I will state that there is no way for Luddington, our community as a whole, to know that we would be hosting the playoff game. That decision was not made until Sunday, just as an FYI for any of you who are not, do not follow local football. So we didn't know until yesterday that we were going to be hosting this, this playoff game. So I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion. I do not feel that it is something within my power that I want to say Halloween is rescheduled, or it is staying as planned on Friday. I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion this evening and gather your, your thoughts and opinions. Thank you.
I'll start. While we may not have been able to predict that these two events would coincide, the regional games have been on the schedule for some time, and maybe nobody else other than maybe Coach Gunso thought that they would be where they are today, and, and of course, the football team. While I recognize the desire and the interest of, of people, we got, I don't know how many families that have already planned on this, and, and I recognize that some families are going to have a difficult decision because, you know, maybe their, their children will be at Oriole, their older children will be at Oriole Park. If you want to change it, I would change the time maybe earlier. I do have issues of it being moved to November 1st. That is in some faiths, all Souls Day, so it is a holy day for some faiths, and on that day, they don't wear costumes or masks or things like that. So doing it on November 1st is, to me, a complete non-starter. But I think, given that, given the time, you know, what do we got, four days, whatever it is, till Halloween, trying to put the word out that it's been moved to a, a different day, I think would be extraordinarily difficult. And while there may not be voters right now, you would upset a lot of young kids, I think, in that process. So I don't have an appetite for moving it. I recognize the increased difficulty, you know, just in terms of staffing and, and police and overtime, but as you said, they're prepared for it, and so I'm not...
Yeah, I recommend to leave it as is.
I'll take the opposite view on this. If we look outside right now, it's 7:00, and I will be going to the football game. And it is true that we didn't know until yesterday that we would be able to host the game. We were hoping we could, but we will. Big Rapids is a very good football team, too, so they will bring a huge congregation, and we will have a big one, too. Luddington hasn't had a nine-and-all season for many, many years, and if you look at trying to leave Oriole Field or get to Oriole Field before or after a game, it is dangerous, even with the older kids crossing the streets and stuff. For safety, I would say we should change it. There's been a lot of Halloween stuff already at downtown, there's lots of trick-or-treats that have gone on, kids have gone to lots of things, and I do think it would be hard to get the word out that we're changing to Saturday, but I think for everyone's safety, it would be better to, to put it on Saturday, and those people that want to go Saturday could go Saturday then. So I would, I would encourage us to look at Saturday.
I think that Halloween falls on October 31st every year, just like Christmas is December 25th, so Halloween is October 31st, and I think about how many times have we, you know, looked outside and it's rainy, or, or, you know, what have you, and we still have trick-or-treating? And unfortunately, we just have to make that choice. Are you going to go trick-or-treating, or maybe you go trick-or-treating for the first hour and then go to the game after? And it is unfortunate that we do have to make those, those decisions, but I think Halloween is on October 31st, and it should remain that way in the city.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Let's say that you move it from 5:00 to 7:00, right? Or right now, it's 6:00 to 8:00. Anything happen to people that are out there trick-or-treating at 8:30, still pounding on doors, right? So, you know, if you wanted to do something, then move it up an hour.
And I could totally get behind that, just not changing the date.
And that doesn't mean that people are, that are going to be out, keep their lights on, the welcome kids that are still out there, you know, but maybe, you know, maybe that's the answer. I don't know.
I will tell you that in the past, so I can only think of one time in the last 25 years where it was changed, and it was changed based on shifting it a day because of daylight savings time, so that the trick-or-treat would be on a day where it was a little lighter than before. So saying that, it does make sense if council is of mind to, to try to create a safety factor that might not exist when the two, the two events are happening at the same time, backing it up a little bit more would make sense on the same day.
I'm not opposed to that.
Me either. It would be better to get the little ones off the streets earlier.
I have a question. So when, when or who decides that it's 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock on what particular day?
Did we decide this in the first place?
I can tell you how it's happened in the past, and it had, it was related to the day, the daylight savings time. And somebody at the front desk was, or in the city hall staff, as I was walking through, asking what it was, and we changed the date that way. They started answering the questions, and that's the way it happened. Now, clearly, that's not the best, that's not the ideal situation, but that's how it happened in the past. So probably better comes from this council to make a definitive decision and either leave it, or make it earlier, or switch days.
I'm not sure I can make it...
entertain a motion to do any one of those three.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure I can make a definitive decision. I haven't talked to the great pumpkin.
I will say that as someone with a young child and someone that works full-time, getting, getting your child out the door at any reasonable time is nearly impossible, let alone getting out of work, getting them out of school in their costume and out the door by 6:00 is pretty impressive. 5:00, I don't know if we even change the time, if that would make a difference. So I'm just throwing that out there, and, and I realize that the thought, right, that the sentiment is there, but I don't know if that would actually make, make much of a difference if, if, if we made that change. I do know that we have the, the partners and for channeling the communication and getting that out there, if we did make that change, to push that message out over the next several days into the community. But just speaking on behalf of someone with a, a little, a little person with a strong personality, that's, that is a challenge.
I think it's supposed to rain on Friday, too. I think it's supposed to rain on Friday, too.
Well, it wouldn't be Halloween if it didn't.
That's true.
So I'll entertain a motion, any one of those three options, if anyone wants to make one.
I will make a motion to keep trick-or-treating from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on October 31st.
Support.
I don't think we need a motion to do that, right? I mean, it is what it is. So, so if we have a motion to either change the time or change the date either before or after the 31st, would be the three potentials there. We have a motion and the second that's already on the floor, and... I don't know that we want to, I don't know that we, I don't think it's appropriate that we make a motion to do what's already scheduled. Well, except that if it's important that the council acts, it's probably not a bad idea. Fair enough. All right. This is, okay.
Is there a Santa Claus?
So...
Will we be usurping someone else's authority?
Let me state this first, before we get any questions, any more questions. We have a motion to leave it as is by Council Stibbets. Have a support for that motion. Do we have any comments or questions? Council Kringbrink?
This was set, apparently, just arbitrarily by someone in the office here in the past. The trick-or-treat times are... The trick-or-treat times, or was it set by the DDA or who typically sets it?
The downtown had their own separate trick-or-treat and that was held this, yesterday. So no, this is a, this is the general time set by the city. And that's usually if there's questions, again, that question is directed to our offices.
Chief Jones, are your officers and yourself fully equipped to handle Halloween and a playoff football game in the same day?
We'll take care of whatever needs to happen.
Perfect.
All right. Any other questions? The motion is to leave it as same. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Votes in, we're going to stay on track. All right. The next one is, I have a couple of action items. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have my true action item. Thank you for entertaining that concern that arose today. The action item that I have tonight is to retain, continue retaining outside attorney services from Micah Myers throughout the lawsuit that we have received from ASR Real Estate. We have retained Micah Myers' services throughout the site plan violations this summer related to 129 West Luddington Avenue. As we move through the court proceedings, our MMRMA insurance coverage has provided us with an attorney. There is a significant benefit to retaining Micah Myers' legal services throughout the court proceedings and we would like to continue utilizing those services, although they do come at a cost to the city. And I am recommending that we continue to use those services until all of these permit issues at 129 West Luddington Avenue are resolved.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement agreement with Micah Myers.
And I'll support.
Okay, the motion by Council Trizano, support by Council Stibbets to approve the engagement agreement with Micah Myers. Any comments or questions?
Your Honor, I would just note that the initial engagement was well within the city manager's purchasing authority. Now that it's going to extend perhaps into next year, it's a good idea to affirm that. But there was no problem initially engaging them.
I will like to thank you for that comment, Council Balger. I do anticipate that the cost will continue to go up and likely exceed my spending authority. And with the end of the year coming and rolling into a second fiscal year, those two triggers will likely exceed my authority, which is why I wanted to bring this forth before we get into any further legal proceedings and my thoughts are no longer at this stage. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All righty, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. That is all.
All right. Move on to agenda item number 10. I have two action items. The first one is the approval of the fireworks permit for downtown Luddington Board New Year's Eve celebration. I'd ask Brandy Miller to come to the lectern and probably stay up because you have two items, so.
A little earlier in the year.
Yep.
Yes. We are submitting the fireworks permit for the New Year's Eve ball drop a little earlier, just based on feedback from council last year and in previous years. We've always waited to submit that until December. Typically, at the insurance company, we have a 30-day binder, so we're not able to typically get it any sooner. And the city has required that ahead of time, actually issuing the permit. So the permit is before you tonight for approval contingent upon receiving the certificate of insurance, which we hope to have at the beginning of December. We already have that process in motion, but again, this is a pretty niche request and carrier, so we always have a 30-day binder.
Brandy, I know that it's on the documents before council tonight, but do you want to just give a where and when kind of a...
Yes. The fireworks permit is, this will be year three that we are, have permission to use the old bank building on South James Street and the roof there. We have engaged PD, the fire department, DPW, to really help establish that intersection around South James Street and Loomis Street as the zone, safety zone for the fireworks display at midnight following the ball drop. So it is the same setup, same technicians who will be lighting the fireworks at the same location, so really no year-to-year change. This will be the third year that we've been consistently in that location.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, the fireworks listed are mines and cakes.
Yes.
Describe what those are.
Well, I'm not a technician, however, those are the same that you have seen prior. They are Class C fireworks, so they're the same fireworks you and I could go and purchase in front, one of the tents in front of the big box stores ahead of any of the holidays. Largely, they look very impressive because we're shooting them off from the top of a building. So getting them higher in the air make them look much larger than they are, but largely just spraying and the ones that go up and explode at the top. But they are, again, fireworks you and I could go and purchase at a store on our own.
Okay.
I don't have any more technical terms to share. I apologize.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve that permit request?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Wencesky, support by Council Stibbets to approve the fireworks permit for downtown Luddington Board New Year's Eve celebration. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, do you want to...
Sure. Timing for our 2026 request is just, we have a January community event, so thought to be efficient with our time, get all of our 2026 requests for the Chamber Alliance before you all. That includes the January 31st Pure Luddington Brew Fest, the Luddington Offshore Classic Fishing Tournament, Gold Coast Artisan Fair in August, and then the Glow on the Avenue Holiday Parade. And again, those are all 2026 events that the Chamber hosts, utilizing city parks and city services, largely DPW.
Do we have a motion to approve those events?
So moved.
I'll second.
So Brandy, would you like to add Halloween to that?
If someone needs to do it, we'll throw that in there, yeah.
If you only knew what day and what time, huh?
Yep. Hunk's world conflicts.
So just to kind of further, bring that out. So Pure Ludding Brew Fest, if I can say it, January 31st at Legacy Plaza, right? Luddington Offshore Classic at Waterfront Park, Gold Coast Artisan Fair at Rotary Park, and a Glow on the Avenue Holiday Parade. Brandy, are these pretty much the same, forgive this question, but these are pretty much the same venues as year-to-year-to-year you do them, correct?
Correct. Yep, same venues and no change to our, you know, normal activities at any of those events.
And no conflicting events that you're aware of?
No. No basketball games, football game, no.
All right. Thanks for answering those questions. Yes?
My apologies. Brandy, are there any, I realize they're significantly far out, but will you need any DPW materials for those events further out and just update your event permit request at that time? When you get closer, do you not need any materials for those events?
We do, and I did submit the event applications with those. We typically, year-to-year, we've pretty much narrowed in on exactly what those materials are. We have made it good practice just for these events and the events that we administer on behalf of the other organizations that we work with to, if we try to have a meeting one-on-one with DPW and staff if there are any last-minute equipment changes that we need to be billed for. But largely, we've used the same event forms and have really had the same materials used year-to-year. So I don't anticipate any changes. These are pretty consistent year-to-year.
Okay, I just, I think, I forgot which counselor I was discussing with earlier. The last three events didn't have any materials needed for them. Is that correct?
No, they do have materials for them.
They didn't have anything filled in.
I think that's a continuation of the firework event.
Brew Fest was the only one, Brandy, that had the form filled out. The other three were here in the packet, but there's nothing on them.
Nothing in them? Okay, so we, yes, we can supply those, but they are consistent with the previous year's request. But yeah, so we can make sure that DPW has those.
Perfect. Again, I didn't think it was necessary for here, but I just wanted to make sure we got them to Jennifer and to Andy's. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Balger, support by Council Wencesky to approve 2026 Chamber Alliance of Mason County events. Brew Fest on January 31st, Luddington Offshore Classic July 13th, Gold Coast Artisans Fair August 8th and 9th, and a Glow on the Avenue Parade, Holiday Parade on November 28th. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the second round of public comment. We'll adhere to the same guidelines mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting, with the exception that each speaker will have two minutes. I request that anyone wishing to address the council, please step to the lectern, state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for two minutes, speak directly into the microphone, address all comments to this chair. Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Rada, Third Ward. The city manager cannot wrestle contracting authority from the city council, let that be said. So let's consider that the closed session held on August 6th was not based on a legitimate purpose and presume that the city adopted the absurd position of creating an extortion scheme behind those doors. Contrary to what you see, I do not have super hearing, but I am facing some very real criminal penalties just for standing outside that door. That night where I didn't hear a single word of what was said in this chamber, only the words of Police Captain Mike Abman, telling me I couldn't stand quietly minding my own business on paved, outside, public property. If this sounds like déjà vu, it has happened before. The city prosecuted me earlier this year for trespassing by walking down the Cartier Park, Path, Park, Walkway after they tried to enforce an unlawful taking of my rights. That case was dismissed by the court. This new one will meet the same fate, but you will have accomplished your evil purpose of defaming my name to cover up your shame. After eventually complying that day with the unlawful orders given under threat, direct threat of physical force, I received a new criminal charge from the city's contracted prosecutor three weeks later for disturbing a peaceful and lawful meeting. I have a constitutional right to stand on otherwise unrestricted public property without a police officer approaching me and offering me to move on the sole basis that he thinks I can overhear what has been determined to be an illegally closed session.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening again.
Good evening again. Down here during the past week, it's actually been over a month, maybe even two, the response from the public has been incredible. Tens of thousands of people have viewed the information we've shared, data, photos, and verified documents that are now posted on PM Lake.org and across our social pages. What people are seeing are facts straight from state and city records, the condition of our lagoons, the age of our sewer lines, the investments other communities made to solve cellular problems. None of this material targets anyone personally. There are no names, only public documents. Our goal has always been to turn evidence into understanding and understanding into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Evening again.
Good evening. Daniel Johnson, 503 North of Vinum. I would encourage the council to look up Executive Order 13825 of March 1st, 2018, Section 12 amendments effective January 1st, 2019. I'll leave that information right here. I won't go into it any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Hearing none, and we'll move on to agenda item number 12, miscellaneous business.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have something.
Yes.
I would like to recognize the Luddington Senior Center. I want to thank them for serving our community. I recently went on a trip to New York with them and it was a great trip. And we saw many of the highlights of New York City. The price was very reasonable and affordable and they took great care of us. I want to give special recognition to Barb and Gary Iteen and Julie Vanderwall and Bethany Carrier, as well as all the whole team, including Andrea Morel at the Senior Center. They do a great job, so thank you for that. The Luddington Senior Center offers a variety of programs and activities that promote the well-being of our seniors for our community. They are here to support seniors and to provide valuable services, and they provide the resources to help maintain a healthy and active lifestyle. I fully support the Luddington Senior Center and their staff and all that they do. I want to give a sincere, heartfelt thank you for your service to our community. Thank you.
I have one good thing to share tonight, too. Have you taken the time to look at nature's artwork this past week? The sumac trees are fiery orange and yellow. The red maple trees stand tall with their brilliant red leaves. The sugar maple leaves are turning into a beautiful sunset yellow color. And the oak trees, poor things, are turning their classic brown color. And they all mesh together with the continuous green needles of the evergreen trees. Try to catch nature's artistry this week before she puts her paintbrush away for the winter.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a few things, Your Honor. I would like to address a few things that were brought up this evening in public comment. Actually, first, I will call on Chief Jones to continue beating the same drum. Can you please address the K-9 funds that are associated in the general fund and related to the credit card transactions that were brought up this evening?
Yes, ma'am. So the dog food, the MetLife Vet Insurance Policy and the other purchases were made with the city credit card. The items were purchased for city assets. The money was pre-funded into an account by Friends of Luddington Police that paid that credit card invoice. There's no waiting for reimbursement. The money is already in the account funded by Friends of Luddington Police to pay all of those expenses, as they were three months ago and then six months ago.
Thank you. And Clerk Luskin, can you please verify that?
Yes, that's true.
Thank you. I would also like to address a comment that was made this evening about the plumber's expense for $350,000 in its relation to the city hiring that contractor to search for lead lines in the city of Luddington. The city of Luddington received, I believe, a $600,000 grant to search for unknown lead lines in the city of Luddington. We have an unknown amount of lead services in the city limits. We could have several hundred, we could have several thousand. We know, we have identified some that are lead, but we have several areas that we have yet...
that we have yet to go through, um, and identify all of those lead lines. So that $350,000 contract is 100% payable by those grant funds. Those grant funds can only be used to find lead lines. They cannot be used to actually replace lead lines. So we can't reallocate that money, um, and use it towards the construction side. It's only, it can only be used to actually find the lead lines. Yes, it is true that we have the equipment and we have qualified individuals who can go out and find those lead lines. However, those are the same folks, um, that are in your house replacing water meters. Those are the same folks that are maintaining the water and sewer lines under the ground. Um, they are a very small group of folks, and if they were doing the work that plumbers would do, we would need to double the size of our department. So we can't have them doing both of those things, hence the reason why we have a grant, um, to pay a contractor to do that work. Um, another comment was made this evening, um, let's see, um, in regards to Lake Wind Center West Association. Um, that is a couple-year-old issue, um, in regards to their sewer backup issues. Uh, that came up when I first started here. Um, that is, goes, predates both myself and Andy Law as the DPW superintendent. Um, they had significant sewer backups back in, I believe, 2021. We spent significant staff time, city manager time, our insurance company, our attorney. Um, we did significant testing, and back then, it was determined that there was an engineering construction error on their side, um, on the private side, which is leading to their issues. Um, we were told by our insurance company, um, that it is no longer our obligation to provide them any further information and that the problem and the issue is on their side. We have spent several dozens of hours providing them with information and sitting down and having conversations with them, um, and that we are no longer obligated to do so. So that has been our, my directive from our insurance company. If this board would like me to have a different directive, um, I would be happy to do so. Um, but I did not want to, uh, rehash an old issue that had, from what my perspective, had already been resolved back in 2021 and 2022 by our staff and those folks that we have hired to represent us back then. Um, I believe that is all that I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Well, there's one more piece of business to do, and that's to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have support?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. We adjourn at 7:30.